...to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All the roll calls starting on my right.
Counselperson Red Fire.
Counselperson. Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
Should be enough for additional. Make motion approved.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of October 9th, 2018.
Smoke to approve.
We have a motion in a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That also carries. Takes us to finance and budget. Listing of the additional council payables in there also. Questions? To finance director.
I'm going to make motion.
We've got a ton in there. Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Three-quarter financial report and mine is...
I haven't included. I really have no comments. I'll answer any questions that you may have. Really, we don't do any budget revisions until towards the end of the, I don't remember.
Questions? Barbara, by the way. Three-quarter financial report. You all ready again?
Nope.
Alright. And then move on to general business. First item on the general business tonight, what we're all here for. We're going to have a public hearing on 2018 CIP improvements. So I will close the regular meeting right now and open the public hearing. Hearing is now open for the 2018 CIP improvements. And first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. I'd like to thank you all for the patience and for the weather you've had to put up with. I can only remember one other project that was that bad, and that is mine. It was into November before we got done. We don't have the control we'd like over the weather. We do have control over the crews and our engineering firms and inspectors. I felt they've done a very good job making sure we're getting a quality project even though it seems like it's taking forever and ever and ever. But it's one that'll last us forever. So I want to thank you all for that. I really appreciate it. I know some of you have had a long summer. But it's just about over now. So with that, I'll turn it over to Barbara.
And I may be taking in Mr. Schell here. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider questions and objections to the proposed special assessments that were included in the letters that you all received about two, three weeks ago. It's for the public improvements on Luella Place, Fifth Avenue Northeast, 12th Avenue Northeast, the steps of Third Street and Fifth Street, and Sunrise Court. And if we are going to receive any signed written notification of appeal, if, I stress this a couple of times during this kind of boring presentation, but legally I have to do this by the most state statutes and what we present on this are all statute requirements. Also, the purpose of this is that if anybody wants to appeal the assessment and the assessment letter I'd sent, they have to do it tonight. They have to notify us tonight within, by the time you close the public hearing.
It can be written or oral tonight.
Written or oral. Yes, sir. We had to follow the state statutes and through the assessment procedures and we had to have council approval for different resolutions on different dates. I'm not going to sit here and tell you every resolution number or the dates, but I have to by law go through the resolutions saying that first we had the city engineers prepare a feasibility report, then we called a special hearing and mailed notices, published the notice in the newspaper for two times before the actual public hearing, and then we had held a public hearing on August 8th for Luella and for 12th Avenue, and then we held a public hearing on the Fifth Avenue improvements. After the hearing was done, we had to have council approve unanimously ordering the improvements and the preparation of plans. After that came January after the engineer, Gina, I'm sorry, Jenna, did the plans and specs and we reviewed them and then we ordered the advertisement for bids. Bid opening then happened in February and at the council meeting on February 27th after all the bid openings were reviewed by engineering, they received the bids and then they awarded the contracts. In September, we had to declare the amount of our assessments and the assessment cost per property. We called the hearing right now. Then we published it. Tonight, we are having this hearing so that council can hear the results of all of that and make a decision tonight whether they're going to go ahead. This is a notice of the hearing that was in the newspaper. A portion of this was also sent to each property owner. The assessments are based on an assessment policy that the city has that was amended into the year 2010. Twenty-five percent of the reconstruction of a street, and this is based on a normal street, not a street that's wider. It has to be based on a normal residential street. Twenty-five percent of that is assessed to the property owner. The city pays seventy-five percent. The water mains and sewer mains underneath the street, any water, new water sewer mains are a hundred percent paid by city enterprise funds, but the water connection to the water or the sewer is fifty percent to the property owner and fifty percent to the city. It is based on your linear footage unless you live on a corner lot. If you live on a corner lot, you are only assessed if the project is on the shorter side of the lot. Curved lots, we do it on the right-of-way base property line, not on the curved line, but on the right-of-way line. The project this year is a project of one thousand nine, I'm sorry, one million, nine-hundred-and-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-three dollars. Of that, two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-four was assessed to the abutting property owner. The remaining one point six million was absorbed within the city budget. Street, the street assessment was two-hundred-and-seven-plus-thousand dollars. The city general fund paid over a million. Water mains, the utility funds paid four-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars of water main improvements and seventy-four thousand dollars for the sewer. And then total, we split the costs of the water connections and the sewer connections. When we had our first public hearing regarding the preliminary figures, we figured that the 12th Avenue Sunrise and Fifth Avenue, that your linear foot assessment was going to be sixty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. It came in after construction at fifty-four dollars and fourteen cents. Water connections and sewer connections were estimated at a thousand seventy-two dollars. Water connections did come in five hundred dollars higher and the sewer connection came in about three hundred dollars higher. Luella Place, since we only did more of a resurfacing on that, was estimated at twenty-four dollars and fifty cents, came in at twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. That was actually assessed. If the council tonight approves the assessment on roll, you would have thirty days from tonight, but we are extending that because in thirty days ends up November, 23rd is a Saturday, so you would have that following Monday to pay any part of the assessment amount. All of it, a portion of it, any amount that you want interest-free. Whatever balance is left after that time will be placed on the assessment roll and will go to the county. And we go back to October 24th or whatever that balance is, there would be an interest of four point five percent for the first year. The first year of interest goes from the October 24th date through December of 31st of 2019 and then every year thereafter for the next nine years. Once the assessment is placed on the property tax roll, you are not allowed by state statute to pay a portion of it. You either have to pay what's due for that year in full or if you wanted to, you could pay the whole remaining balance, but you cannot pay a portion of it because it will show on your tax roll, whatever payment is due that year, half of it will be due with your main payment, the other half will be due with your October payment. Tonight, if you, anyone here wants to appeal their process, appeal the amount, your first step is before the end of this, before the mayor closes this, you have to either give him a written objection or we do take public objections. And then, if you have appealed this assessment, you formally have to give a notice once you contact the county offices to get on the court, the district court docket. You have to serve the notice to the mayor or the administrator within thirty days. So there again, it would be right around that 25th of November. After that time, you have ten days to file your complaint with the district courts and at that time then, we would have to go to the district courts for their hearing. All objections that are not received, and again, I emphasize, by the end of this public hearing, you will have, your legal rights will be taken away by state statute and you will be not able to object to any reasonable assessment. There is one other way besides the assessment field. You can, in some cases, defer your assessments, but it is very stringent and what you have to be is sixty-five years of age or older or totally impermanently disabled. You have to own the property. The property has to be homesteaded and the hardest part of this one is you have to meet the income threshold that's established by the U.S. Census Bureau threshold and it's to do with the poverty there. So if you file a federal tax that is higher than the state property threshold, I mean, the federal property threshold, you would not be eligible for a deferment. Also, if you are deferred by any chance or for any reason, once you sell the property, the death of the owner of the property or it becomes a non-homesteaded property or all of a sudden you inherited a bunch of money or something like that, that you have no hardship, the deferment would be kicking in and it would then go into the tenure payback. With that, Mayor, I would like to send this over to you and let you continue public hearing.
Alright, we're back to your public hearing. Just to remind you once more, in case you want to, whoever does, if you got written or oral, I'm going to give you another chance now because I don't want you forgetting that closed public hearing is about to begin. We've received one, so if we have any more, we'll give you an opportunity now before we receive.
Yes, Jimmy. I was just looking at mine and it said that I was getting charged a hundred and forty-two feet. My lot's only a hundred and twenty.
Okay, well, I'm going to give you all an opportunity to give us your comments or concerns, but this is if you want to go through all those procedures Barbara said about...
Do I have to appeal this then or...
No, if it's for, if you're questioning the things, we will get back to the property tax.
You'll have an opportunity.
Oh, no, no.
I'm going to remind everybody a couple of times. If nobody wants to do that right now, Terry, go ahead, you can be the first one, but I would ask when you stand up with your concerns or comments or whatever, you state your name and address for the record so we can have that.
I'm Terry Schroder, 107 Fifth Avenue Northeast. You know, just looking at the slip tonight, it said that I'm being charged for a hundred and forty-two feet. My legal document's a hundred and twenty is my lot.
Okay.
So there's twenty-two feet on there that...
I will be more than happy to work with you. My understanding is that you have two separate parcels, two parcels on that? Okay.
A hundred foot and twenty foot.
Okay, we'll definitely take a look at that.
And I just happened to notice it tonight.
Okay. And I look at the homestead thing, so let's get together and we will...
Okay, I'll stop. I'll give you a call.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you, Terry.
Who'd like to be next?
I've got Mark Maye here. Mark, 111 Sunset Sunrise Court. Have you guys paid for this project? Yep?
No, and we don't pay a hundred percent of it until after the warranty period is up.
But you want us to pay a hundred percent before we get finished?
It will be finished by the time the assessment's due in the end, by the end of November.
So the final layer of blacktop will be on?
Final layer of blacktop is never put on until the following year.
Right, so it won't be finished. It will or won't be?
They call it, yeah.
Well, I was just asking.
You hear the word I'm looking for?
Substantial completion.
Substantial completion.
Right, so but you want us to pay in full, but you guys aren't paying in full?
You can either pay in full, Mark, or you can pay over ten years.
Right, but why can't we just pay when it's not? I'm just asking.
State statute.
It's statute, it's just a way to set up. These requirements are laid out by state statute and every city in our state follows that procedure. So it's up to you, sorry, it's up to your choice if you want to pay off that full amount during this period or maybe you only want to pay ninety percent of it and then just the remaining ten can be carried over the remaining ten years and then at any point like Barb pointed out, you can pay off that.
Right, I didn't want to get charged the interest and I'll pay it off, but if you guys aren't paying for it, why do I got to pay it?
We do not have them put the final lift on because we take a year in case they're settling in the street and so it's our choice. We could force them to put it on the show.
I'll be done with it.
I'm not going to say that. If you guys aren't paying for it, but you want us to pay for it, that's my question.
We're going to hold back five percent until this whole thing's completed.
So you're holding back five percent for the final lift?
Is it five this year or is it how much?
We hold back five percent.
For two years.
No, we hold back five percent on the entire project until final completion, so we don't pay for that final lift of blacktop until next year. We also hold back five percent until they finish that first punch list next spring. Then we pay in full. We hold on to a bond from the contractor for a two-year period for warranty and two years after that final completion, we come back, we do another walkthrough of the entire project and then the contractor is supposed to fix any warranty issues at that point and then the contractor's released.
So what's covered under your warranty? You guys have said that a couple of times, that there's a warranty on it. So is there an estimated time limit? How long is it supposed to last?
So we have a two-year warranty on every element of the project.
Can I just say, can we get Mark's side by first? Can we have this lady up?
Your thirty days for your sod was then when it was handed, it gets handed over to you for maintenance of it.
Really?
Yeah.
We really want to do that?
For maintaining your sod, but your concrete, you know, expectations, lifetime for your road, depending on the maintenance that's done for the roadway, for the asphalt and concrete, you can see fifty to seventy years on a road. Sometimes it's twenty or thirty. It all depends on everything that's in it. Materials for your pipe, pipe materials, they, it all depends on manufacturer. Some materials will say they have fifty-year life, some are saying a hundred-year life now. We expect that your infrastructure under the road lasts about seventy years now with the types of materials that you use.
Okay, now we'll go back. Let's get back in order here. The gentleman back there, did you have your hand up?
Would you wave the...
Could I have your name and address?
Yeah, Mike McCormick, 104 12th Avenue Northeast. I prefer not to stand because of disabilities.
That's fine.
First of all, I want to thank two people on the city staff, Barb Newbauer and Sean Hill. You guys should be proud that they are city employees. They've been very polite to me. When the contractors promised they'd get me out to my medical appointments, they failed. Sean Poudin came over on a Saturday morning and built a dirt ramp where my driveway was so that I could get to my aunt's funeral. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been able to get there. Secondly, this was a very tough year for somebody in my position, even though a lot of people tried to help. It was very difficult to get to medical appointments and some I had to cancel. For people that are facing this next year, to your elderly or disabled, you need to plan ahead and have somebody that can help you get your groceries, get the medical appointments, even just to get out of the house for your own sanity. And finally, if you're against sidewalks, some of us are, some of us aren't, there's an election in two weeks. Vote for people that don't want sidewalks and will listen to you and not call your names if you have an opposing opinion. With that, I'll yield the balance of my time.
Thank you for your comments and we are, I will second that, we are very proud of our employees, so thank you for bringing that up. Who'd like to be next?
I'm Cody Moi, 1106 Sunrise Court. I have two questions. The first one, one back to Barb on paying this loan back in ten years. I wanted to clarify with, I've noticed in the payment schedule that was nailed out, each yearly installment was a little bit less. Is there a way that, I mean, that first year was nine-hundred-and-something dollars?
Right, because that's...
Is there a way that you can, we can make it so each year we pay that amount? That way it's not actually dragged out for ten years?
No, by law, I have to follow that formula. And the first year, the reason this is a little more is because you're having, you're going to be paying interest from October 24th through the end of December plus another full year. These are requirements by the county and the state. And then what they do is your, if you look at your principal, your principal is staying the same, but the reason they're going down every year is because your interest is based on the balance.
Okay, so based off of what you're still saying, what you previously said, I can't make that year's payment plus to make up whatever that difference is on stuff.
Well, the only way you can do it by state statute, and I agree with you a hundred percent, and I've argued with some of the people at state, is because if you wanted to pay like a flat amount, let's say you wanted to pay six hundred dollars every year, you know, they will not allow that. They will not allow, they want the principal spread over the ten-year period. If you want to pay off like in seven years and you have maybe saved so much money, you can pay off all of it at seven years, but you have to pay off the whole balance plus what's that year. That's why we have given, you know, I mean, I know it's not real fair and I wish we could do it at a longer period of time, but we've given people now that thirty days before we weren't even able to do that, that if you wanted to pay a hundred dollars on it versus the first payment, we don't care so that we can cut that balance down for you for the spread.
Okay. My other question was, I know that we didn't, as far as I was told, that they didn't replace the sewer line on Sunrise Court for the sewer. And then I noticed, knowing that, and then we go ahead and get the final assessment and the assessment only went down, what, six hundred dollars? I'm having a hard time seeing how not replacing a sewer line only equates to only dropping down six hundred dollars.
Okay, but for one thing, the sewer line, whether we replace it or not, is not assessed to you. Sewer lines are paid for a hundred percent by the general fund and the utility, you know, the utilities that we collect. So there is no assessment for water lines or sewer lines, only for the connection. And I think they can explain to you better why maybe there wasn't a sewer line put in there.
Yes, so what we did for the project is we had a colorizing of the sewer main and did an internal inspection of the main. The main's still in good condition. We don't have leaking areas. It's a very deep main, but the condition of the pipe was good. There was one spot where we needed to do a spot repair to fix it, but otherwise it is in good shape, so there was no need to actually tear it out and put a new one in there. But Barb's right, that sewer main would get paid from the sewer funds, not from you. And your assessment never incorporated a sewer main. It wasn't actually even calculated in during the feasibility report because we had looked at that previously.
So then if, say, something happens further on down the road and the sewer line bursts and you guys have to come in here and tear the road up again, does that cost fall on the housing then or...
If there's maintenance to the main, the city is responsible for maintenance of the main.
Okay.
Sewer mains can be repaired generally without having to disrupt the street. They can be fixed underground, slip lining and stuff like that, so that's why they chose not to do that because we can do it without tearing the whole street up again if we need to do it.
Michelle Campbell at the same address that Cody lives at. So I just have a few questions. So you guys are saying that this will start on the 24th, which is tomorrow, and we are nowhere near done. You've got pretty much done in your... No, so... Are you... I'm on Sunrise Court, yes. Okay.
So it's the sod.
They still have the sod?
Yes. So I think on the slide, your thirty days is actually November 24th that you pay until that you pay the okay thing. We had October.
That's if they don't pay anything. If they don't pay anything, then the interest goes back to October when I have to assess it to the county. But if you're going to pay any kind of portion of it, you have interest free. Yep, I understand that, but how can you start charging interest on that when we're not even done?
So Mark just did.
I know.
I answered. I can not really answer that sort of answer.
When is it even done?
And my other question is too, are they incurring fines? We were told at the meeting that they would incur fines for not being done. We're way over Labor Day weekend.
With the conditions of the summer, this fall, weather conditions, other conditions out there, doing extra work allows them extra time, ways that they change the way they're doing construction to allow access even more than what was regulated in the contract, that also allows them for extra time. By state law, actually national law, we can't actually put a fine on a contractor. What it is, is liquidated damages. We have to have financial hardship damages that would then assess to the contractor who is not showing the faith of completing the project timely.
Okay, with all due respect though, if you told me that I had until Labor Day to finish a project and I wasn't working Saturdays or Sundays and I knew I was far behind, I can certainly assure you that I would be there on Saturdays and Sundays to finish that.
How many Saturdays did they work before the deadline?
I would... I don't have...
Who picks up all the extra cost from you guys' firm? Obviously, you guys have a lot more money invested to have a inspector out there for two plus extra months. City pick all that up?
On the days they don't work, the inspectors don't...
We don't charge anything either.
It should be based on working days and some of those days you guys are discouraged by, we chose to even not do it because, yeah, the sun's shining, the material, the ground, it's soggy, you're not going to get a good product. And we'd rather go through six months of total hell and have a good product for forty years than mud something in and then a year from now you guys are upset and you're living with it for forty years. So we get the frustration and everybody's pointing, but it's just, we wanted a better product in the end.
So pouring concrete and freezing cold is better?
Let's, remember, oh, stand up, state your name and address.
Matt Buller, 11000 Sunrise Court. Is pouring concrete when it's freezing out, is that good for concrete?
Pouring concrete when it's freezing out is not allowed in freezing weather.
Was it freezing?
I would also...
Did it freeze?
You talking about freezing overnight or freezing during the time you're pouring?
About overnight. When is curing? Not covered? Should it have been covered?
The temperature that was predicted for the day.
Was it covered? And was it freezing at night?
I wasn't down here, so I would have to check the records.
You can check what's there and he was a man on the field all the time. You can check that. Did he give us time and date? You can check that, did he give us time and date?
So another question I have is the sod. It's starting to freeze, we're going into winter. It's clearly going to die, it doesn't have enough time to establish roots. So you guys are saying that there's a thirty-day period, right?
So there's a thirty-day period when maintenance happens. If we are now going into the freezing period and we're going to be laying dormant sod, just like your yard goes dormant in the winter, we're going to be laying dormant sod. The contractor takes over maintenance of it for thirty days in the spring. And then it's after that thirty-day period that you are now responsible for it. So, yes, all the sod that was laid previously to the past week, that has passed its thirty-day maintenance period and that is the property owner's responsibility to maintain it. For the sod that has not been laid yet or was laid last week, that is considered dormant, will be considered dormant, it does not have time to rot or start rotting process, and then that is maintained in the spring.
It still falls under warranty if it fails next year and is dead, they will be back to the place.
So when we do our walkthrough next spring and if there's dead portions that are dead not due to being driven over, not dead to evidence of salting of the driveway, which then kills the sod, we will replace those areas. If it's not from the contractor's fault though, we do not replace that portion.
Okay, so two real quick questions and then we'll be done. When are they going to come in to finish the dirt work to bring in the sod on Sunrise Court?
On Sunrise itself, I'm not sure. Last week they were working on Fifth and moving here when the crews are available. As we're paving, last week we were told it was going to be yesterday or today. With rain last week, they got to lay it on other projects. Now they're telling us Thursday. So it's, when you have one company that owns pavement, owns the maintenance in the whole area, we kind of get stuck.
And then how many bids did you guys see before you chose this one?
We had six or seven bids.
So the statement, I just want to make sure, and I understand with the weather, I get that, nobody can control any more than man. But in the meeting, the first meeting that we had over in City Hall, you did say quite clearly that they would incur fines for not being done on liquidated.
So, yeah, liquidated damages, if they, we had good weather conditions, if they, if everything worked and we didn't make any changes, yes. Sitting today, if it still wasn't finished, we'd be looking at what liquidated damages were that would have been daring down here every day. You know, good weather, stuff like that, where there's actually more cost being incurred by the city. When there's not additional cost being incurred, the damage, yeah, there's inconvenience, but of actual damage isn't there that we can't go after the contractor for.
Sally?
I have a question. Sally, putting in 1106 Sunrise Court. Who incurs the errors that the engineering people made such as the wrong angle, they were too steep of a driveway, the hole in the middle of the sidewalk? Has that been put onto us or is the city creating that? There was quite a few errors.
Or bolts, you say bolts?
Yeah. Yes, I did. There was a, we had a problem and the engineering said our driveway was fine when it was sixteen degrees and it was supposed to be less. And so we had to actually go to Brent Byer and ask him to help us to get, you know, because the guy from S D H said, no, it's fine, you know. So if that had been poured, but there's been errors along the way, and I'm just wondering, who incurs that? Is that put on our bill as well? Okay.
You can speak to most of the engineering firms in the area. They don't like me at all, Sally, I get kind of bothered with them because I don't like any extra charges. So I assure you.
I do have one comment though. It was nice to get the emails and stuff, but there were a lot of errors and inaccuracies within the emails. And it was, you know, I, there were, even addresses were incorrect. Some of them said southeast instead of northeast, you know. So I would say a little better communication next year for the people who are going to go through this because things were pretty inaccurate at times. And I know weather has a lot to do with it, but, you know.
And some of that stuff, Sally, we even this week, blacktoppers, we were told they're going to be here Monday originally. Well, they called back, said they weren't going to be here until Wednesday, then I was told, then I heard Thursday. Now I've heard Friday. That's out of our control and we tried to inform everybody. And but we've learned some lessons with it this year too, that maybe we try and keep it more general and don't try and get so specific because we cannot control that. And we try our best to help everybody, but we just don't have that control.
We get the inaccuracy, but the addresses, southeast when we were working and northeast, things like that. I mean, you know, it was just a little more paying attention, you're going to send these out. I get the weather part, I mean, nobody can control that, but there were a lot of errors.
But a lot of these contractors, cement workers, the blacktoppers, they get chewed out so much, it doesn't even affect them anymore. I tried to get him on Turner Shorers driveway for a week to get his finished because he's been the one that's been stuck out the longest. And they, they wouldn't do it, they just, they don't care. And it's frustrating, but they get chewed on so much. And it's, they have a process they got to go through, they have to do, and they just, they know their business better than we do. So it's tough for us to tell them how to do their business.
They were the least of the problems in our area that I.
Well, and it balances around, I mean, it's just, it's different. We try our best to manage everybody the best we can. And you just, some things we just have to learn to cope with and put up with.
I'm just saying, it'd be a little bit more proofreading before you send it out. So at least addresses and things are correct and things like that. I mean, it's just the city and, you know, if you can't get the addresses right in your own city, I think, you know, a little more attention to what you're doing and sending out funny messages would be better for the next group of people.
All right. Evan Kinsley, 105 Fifth Avenue, I have a couple of questions and maybe some comments too. How was the well, the street on the well place was only twenty-two something a foot and we're in the fifty-four of what, how was that such a difference? Didn't they get a brand new road, a curve, gutter?
They got a new road, but that road had to been done within twenty years. So they only had to pay it twenty, they had to pay a percentage because their old road didn't last as long as it was supposed to.
Okay. Secondly, I chose to widen my driveway approach. So how is that charged? Is that charged all the way through the sidewalk or just to the sidewalk or? It ended up being more than I thought, I guess the only thing I could think of is that I'm paying all the way through the sidewalk. Because if I didn't widen my driveway, you guys got to put a sidewalk in anyways, so I should have to pay for the sidewalk.
There would be a difference in the thickness of your sidewalk and the thickness of the aggregate under the sidewalk because we want to make it so you can drive over it. We do put more aggregate and thicken the sidewalk through the driveway. We have a six-inch thick driveway, normal sidewalks only four inches. So we do need to change that. And then it's all calculated based off of our bid prices. So it's the ex, not for the sidewalk, because obviously excavation is there, but for your, for your actual apron, it's the excavation, bringing in more aggregate for that area and the concrete additional area.
And then I guess, I mean, moving forward, I would hope the city can, I don't know. It was a terribly painful experience going through this project. I know what you guys say, it rained and whatnot, but it was ridiculous at times. I mean, we were told we would have access to our driveways at all times other than concrete. We went six weeks before concrete ever even started, but we couldn't get into our driveway. And then when concrete started, we were told probably about nine days. That was well over three weeks. I mean, there was obviously no attempt made to ever give us access. We couldn't even, the sidewalks in our neighborhood were covered with mud because they piled all the dirt on sidewalks and then kind of pushed it off. But there was probably a couple inches of mud on the sidewalk still for weeks. So when it would rain, there's nowhere to walk. Everybody had to park in the church parking lot. They barricaded the entire area, you could hardly get through there. I asked them to move stuff, I even went down there and moved stuff. And they geared up again. I mean, it was, it was ridiculous. And I, I don't know. I don't know what to say really. I mean, counting courtesies.
I don't know what to say either, I mean, I sympathize you. Don't think we don't, I've been through it. I've not given you one bid, I've been exactly through it. I went through weeks, they didn't fill the streets back in then once they opened them up.
Well, they didn't on our street either, they just left it older.
So don't think some of the other ones have ever gone through the same thing. I'll be, I'll be right up front with you people, may be mad enough, I got elected mayor.
I mean, it's ridiculous to sit and tell us you're going to have access every day and then there's no attempt, there's no attempt to even give you access.
I understand, and I'm not.
And I'm not talking one, one time in a rain, I'm talking six weeks.
I hear you well and clear, honestly, dude. I'm not trying to make excuses for us or anyone. It's a situation that it was bad, there's no doubt about it. I mean, you can't believe.
But every time you ask a question to somebody, they say, oh, it's raining, it's raining. I get that, I, I mean, I understand that. But there was days, they were working to Fifth Avenue to work to reconstruct an entire street and they had three people, three people.
Sir, you should see how many times I stopped City Hall, I want to know what exactly was going on and why wasn't something going on. I'm not giving you one bid, you can ask the engineer or the administrator, they'll go sick of it too.
I mean, it's just.
They all did, they just, they all got sick of it.
I mean, I feel like there should be some research or background into these, you know, I understand the low bid process, but if somebody's close and they're a much more reputable company, I mean, come on.
That's what we do, we don't just always go with the lowest mark. We look at people you've worked with before, we ask the engineer who they've worked with before. You know, and you guys have every right to be pissed and every one of us totally understand it. And I hope you have the opportunity to vent all you can tonight. But you got to know when, there's a ton of work that goes into this ahead of time. Nobody can predict the crappy weather or things that happen, you know. I'm open to any comments that we can do to help it. I think, it sounds like most of you here tonight are actually double purpose, purpose tonight, inventing, but also trying to give us angles to help the next group that's going to have to do it next year.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that, that greatly, I mean, that's awesome. But, but we do, we don't just do everything, try to be cheap by any means.
I mean, I just don't know who's like, okay, when I say there was nowhere to walk in our street without walking through mud, that's, that's ridiculous. Whose job is that? Is it my job to call City Hall every two days? I mean, obviously then, I don't know, if you want to say inspector or whoever, they don't care. I mean, the company, the company doing the project clearly doesn't care. The city clearly doesn't care because nothing was ever done about it. If they didn't see the projects going on, I don't know what, I mean, what was going on then, but just, I don't know.
Thank you. Yes.
The day Thompson, 102 Fifth Avenue, North East. And I agree with Adam here, the fact of the matter is that we had one of our elderly people, neighbors, move out because they were afraid for their own health. Because they could not, they sold their home because they could not get out to get their medical kinds of things done. So that's how bad it was. You know, we were in our house, or in the garage, we couldn't get in our garage till May, June and July, almost three whole months before we got to get in our garage, and that's wrong. Plus the fact is, you know, there's some pretty shoddy workmanship there. Right now we have the sod thing going on, we're half our yard is sowed and half of it isn't. And the sod that we have, we must have got the end pieces because a lot of our sod pieces are about this big and that's it. You know, of course, you asked the question about when the sod is going to be done or what's going to happen. Obviously, you don't lay sod, you know, after October fifteenth and expect it to be okay. And so we will definitely be watching next spring to see these people come and maintain the sod when they're supposed to do. And when is that going to happen? Is that fifteen days after the last snow? Is it two days after the last snow? When is all this good stuff going to happen and when will we be notified about that? Plus the fact is, we have a lot of pits and gouges out of our new cement. I called down to City Hall and I said, when are we going to be, when is our street going to be done? And I was told a certain date. Well, that was jumped up quite a bit. In the meantime, because I thought of a certain date, I had to pay eight thousand dollars for a brand new driveway. And half that brand new driveway just got cut up. And now we have pits and gouges and everything in that. Plus we have all kinds of residue on our new cement that we paid for. Now we got to come back and pay another eight thousand dollars for the things, half the stuff that we just tore out, that was just tore out. And I don't think that was right either. Plus the fact is, you know, not only that, but we had our gas line broken. So we had to get out of our house, not once, but twice. We also had a situation with non-potable water. We had sewer backups in our toilets and all those kinds of things also happened. And so it, it was a major fiasco for us on our Fifth Avenue, North East. And it's only a block long, crying out loud. It's not like it's, you know, many, many blocks. It's one block long, that's all it was. And so for this to happen at the gravest speed, and obviously we don't want to have anybody else's sewer belt have to go through what we had to go through. But it's not right. And I think that there needs to be some kind of compensation or something for us for the things that we went through, or some kind of reduction or something because it's not a normal situation and it wasn't fair to anybody that lived on Fifth Avenue. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, I mean?
Well, you said to say water the sod for thirty days. I mean, they laid that stuff on Thursday and they finally got there to water it today. It was, I watered it because it was already starting to brown up, but the people that didn't, a lot of it was already rounding up. I mean, that itself is ridiculous. You should water the sod right after you lay it or within a day at least. With thirty, forty mile an hour winds all weekend, it's just going to dry everything out.
I think it's probably the sod they had left over, so they wanted to get rid of it, so.
It wouldn't surprise me.
I don't think it'll take, I think you're right, you know.
I mean, it wouldn't surprise me to take, that wouldn't surprise me at all. I mean, it's going to be wet in the spring, they'll probably take, but. I mean, that just says something about workmanship to me. If you lay sod and you don't, and you tell me you're going to water it for thirty days and you don't even go and water it the first time until six days later.
I guess that's the other question I was going to ask. When we start watering this grass, who's paying for a water? If we have to do it.
I like my own boss.
What kind of compensation are we going to do for watering the grass that's supposed to be taken care of and maintained, which is the same thing, like Adam said? Five or six days it takes to water, that's not going to grow. I mean, anybody knows you start watering sod right away.
I said, still, still, it would be their responsibility to do the sod. If that's not, don't take it, everything that's a whole nother thing is granted. Way in the back.
Well, I agree with a lot of things that every, and I'm not on Fifth Avenue, I'm 106 12th Avenue. But all in all, the workmanship has been just shoddy, everything they've done. You walk along and look at our new curb, it's going to fall apart. There's chunks all the way along. Secondly, they moved all our mailboxes. We figure out where our mailboxes are and everything, and then we get the curb and gutter finally. So they moved our mailboxes back, set them right in the middle of as much mud as they possibly have, could have set them in. We, Betty couldn't get to her mailbox, she was scared to death, she was going to fall and break away. So we built ramps so we can walk from the sidewalk we didn't want across the mud we've got now because you took our yards to get our mail. Or we can choose to walk over the shoddy laid curb into the mud to try to get around the mud to the front of our mailbox to get our mail. When they put those mailboxes back, why didn't they set them in more concrete? Especially when, when are they going to put our sod down? We've got piles of dirt this high at the end of driveways. They haven't touched it in weeks. They're doing anything, they had all day yesterday. Where were they? Beautiful day, you didn't see a soul there working. It wasn't too cold or too wet to rake dirt and try to get some sod down. I understand all these people's frustrations because I myself have had plenty. I was trying to do a remodel and an addition in this mess and get contractors to my house. It's been real interesting, especially when they promise one thing and do quite another. And now, maybe I'm dumb and don't know a lot, but here we have all this new blacktop. I know the final layer isn't on. And now, maybe I'm dumb and don't know a lot, but here we have all this new blacktop. I know the final layer isn't on. But now all of a sudden, we have all this heavy equipment parked on the side of our narrower street with cones in the middle of the manholes. You can't even get two-way traffic up and down the street. It's ridiculous. And I can't believe there shouldn't be somebody standing behind these contractors making somebody be responsible. Just like there's somebody standing behind all of us to make sure we pay our taxes and are responsible citizens. How can we get stuck with a contractor? And if you go online and look his name up, there's lots of things to be read. If you want a company that doesn't do the job right, does shoddy work, hire those guys. That's all over the internet. And so here we all sit with this mess. And furthermore, a lot of us lost, lost a lot of, of our trees, our shrubs. A lot of our landscaping in our yards, just ripped out, ripped out and left lame for us to clean up. Absolutely. Why should we have had to do that? We didn't wanna lose it. That stuff all costs money. So it costs money. We lost, it cost us money because we lost our landscaping that we paid to put in. It costs us money because now we're sitting in mud and you know as well as I do and everybody else is saying the same thing about the sod. I'll bet you, I would lay a thousand dollar bill down that we end up having to do our own sodding. Or they'll be doing it two or three times over, because it's not gonna live the way they're putting it down. They haven't even, they're putting sod over tree roots this big around? No. You know, those tree roots are gonna come back up through that sod. Who's gonna mow this mess if it's not level? It's just a whole ball of, of a lot of messy issues. For a narrower street because of too much traffic and too high speeds. Speed bumps would've been great. That's been proven to slow traffic down. Because you know what? The narrower street isn't, we've caught people going fifty miles an hour past our place with this heavy equipment parked there. Not even room for two cars to meet. It isn't slowing traffic down. Speed bumps would be awesome.
Did we get your name and address, man?
Yes. I said my name and address. Monday Anderson, one oh six, Twelfth Avenue, Northeast.
I got you, Anderson.
Okay.
Sam Anderson, one oh six, Fifth Avenue. And when they cut our driveway, they didn't put, when they poured the new cement in, they didn't attach it to the old part of the driveway. They just poured it out to it. So what's gonna stop that from heaving and separating like in the wintertime and in the spring?
Yep, it's already started.
Was it attached before?
Well, they, usually you drill, drill rebar.
I know what you're saying, but I'm asking, was it rebarred before?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All our driveways.
And then when they, they cut it out, you know, they cut the rebar, then they didn't put, drill, put new rebar into the old driveway, into the new driveway. So there's nothing that's gonna stop it from heaving. So I mean, who's gonna, I mean, eventually that's gonna, we're gonna have problems with that in the wintertime trying to blow snow.
They're supposed to.
Well, they didn't.
They did, I'm lying.
They did. They said they didn't do it on ours. And another, I mean. Where we're at, then Randy, on the other side of Randy's house, you know, that road comes up the hill and comes down. When we're backing up, we can't see cars until it comes up over that hill and they're doing thirty-five, forty miles an hour. I mean, we, we're having a hard time getting in and out of our driveway. What would it take to put a stop sign on that road?
At every intersection, all the way down that hill.
So when they come up that hill, they have to stop and then come down that hill. I mean, is that an option?
That's something for another discussion. That's a, that's a point we can look at another time.
You know, 'cause we got the people coming from the bottom, up and over, and then when we're backing up, that's right when they're starting to come down that other side. There, there's no, you know, they're doing over thirty miles an hour. You know, that's one of the things we're talking about. Because, you know, especially now when the road's narrower, it's just, it's that much harder when it's unsafe. You know, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir. My name's Sam Eibach, eleven, two oh three, Luella Place. I feel sorry for you guys. I actually had a fairly decent experience with this whole construction. Shame on circle for not talking to the handicapped and the disabled people for not allowing them access into their homes. I actually talked to the contractor and my wife currently walks with a cane, has a very hard time driving. And these contractors worked with me. They stopped their work at the end of my driveway so my wife could actually get to work that day. They were very, very well received. I was very thankful for them. I have a few questions for myself, but you guys seem to have a lot more issues than I do and, and I, uh, I, um, I don't have much to play with. But, uh, my, I've looked at two oh three Luella for fifteen years. I was the second house there. I'm the, probably the longest resident of that street. That street was being repaired probably five, six years after I lived on that street. From buckling, curves were being replaced and it never shoddy workmanship to start with on that street. Um, now I'm paying for partly, but I'm getting a reduced rate, which I'm very thankful for. But still, there is some concerns. Uh, last week, the construction guys came out and they cut all these holes in the street for the water main and for the sewer. Uh, if they were planning on laying the sewer and, or, uh, putting the final cord on, you guys have just become this dodged ball. Because eventually somebody is gonna run in, let me finish the number two. The, it's really terrible. I mean, you've got cars parked on the street and you've got people trying to slip past and it's, eventually something's gonna get hit. I feel guy, sorry for you guys for snowplowing because you guys have had a hell of a time snowplowing. Once again, I have very little complaint about listening to you people. And I feel really sorry for you guys because my experience was pretty good. I, uh, got my sod. There was a little thing about who was gonna mow the sod. It's like, hell, I'm gonna mow better one, so. But, you know, um. It's really, it's really sad that a community like, like ours don't at least talk to the residents that live in there and they pay the taxes. And we do these things for everybody, you know, we pay our taxes. You should at least talk to the people who are handicapped enough so they can get in and out of their houses. That is a constitutional right to get out. And imagine if somebody was to complain and say about that, you guys would be in some deep crap. So, um, I'm very worked up about this. I'm sorry about that. Because the handicap people should really, they're your community. I don't know what, you know, they've lived in this community for years, so I don't know why you guys aren't working with us. And that's, that's pretty much all I got to say, but, um, like I said, my experience was pretty good. The construction guys, I mean, I've gotten pop and, I mean, they were, I mean, I left a cooler pop out for them to drink and.
Bad on that.
You know, it's all, you know, paying forward here, you know, these guys really worked hard. And they did, they stopped at my house, but, uh, it sounds like you guys have got a nightmare or something. I'm sorry for you guys.
Yeah, I got a feeling just quickly on this because you guys are better than what he's saying and I, I don't, I don't think you're fully accurate. Because I know for next year's CIP project, we've already met with, we don't even know what the final plan's gonna be yet. And we've already heard concerns of people that are worried about health problems and getting out of their driveways. This is legitimately bad situation. But to, I, I just, I guess, I know our staff works hard and it's hard for me to sit back. You guys all have every right to vent. But I know that they did. When people brought up to them, hey, we're having trouble getting out, Sean would go on days off or after hours and do what he could and he'd get the driveways going. And they did talk and I, I don't know this, this contractor personally and I wish I had a, as close of a working relationship, or I can't wait to hear more from them later. Because clearly, doesn't sound like these guys will be hired again, I'm guessing. But I, I just wanted to speak up on that behalf to, when you just, you very blatantly make it sound like you're absolutely sure that nobody's reached out to anybody. And shame on us for not thinking about the handicap or the elderly or anything like that. And that's simply not the case, so I feel like I just gotta get out.
Okay, that's fine. I, I made a broad statement. I'll admit to that. And the city people are very good with what they do. Sean, I, you know, you guys all have worked very hard with us. I understand that. But to hear that somebody sells their house because they're too afraid, they're not gonna be able to, I mean.
I can't believe anybody would buy it, given the one worry.
Face it, yeah. I mean, who wants to buy it and you have a ten thousand or a twenty thousand dollar assessment put on their house? There are things that can be done, better, okay? How's that sound?
Well, and I think, I think the things that you guys are asking for were brought up and mentioned and things, it sounds like there were promises made that haven't been kept. That'll have to be addressed and that's why you guys are here today. Because even though they're out there as much as they are, they're not out there when you, as much as you guys are, I mean, clear. So, uh, it's, it's very eye-opening for me. I, I, it's really a pain to sit here and listen to everybody complain about everything that, when you volunteer and you run and do this, but it's, that's why I run for this. This, it's, it's necessary. If we didn't have this, there's no way we would ever know everything going forward. And clearly, it's gonna be interesting, uh, I don't know the whole background. I know that we, people, they've worked in this company before and. It, it, it's gonna be interesting when we have our own, uh, communications regarding this for sure.
Well, the major concerns I had about Luella is, I, of course, I live at the very top of the street. And, uh, last, my wife works from home, except one day a week. And last summer, she counted when somebody was raising the, the level of the ground, uh, west of us. There was over a hundred, a hundred dump trucks flying past our house every stinking day dumping more dirt down to the street. That's gonna, that's gonna kill our roads. I mean, uh, you were saying earlier that there's a, uh. Average street lasts about twenty years. I mean, let's just say twenty years. I've been there for fifty. I've seen prayers being done to the street. So apparently, it wasn't done correctly the first time. And I'm not gonna wave my hands on that. But there is a lot of traffic on that street. And a speed bump or two would be really helpful because these trucks are flying down. There's a lot of little kids on the street and I'm a kids guy and I'd hate to see somebody get killed over a stick. And I gotta get ten loads to this place, you know? And like I said, there's a lot of traffic on Luella. And, you know, because of all the new constructions. I figured every brand new house that's built down there, and I live in the new suburbs. And I knew that when I bought that house at the top of the street, I was gonna see a lot of trucks. It wasn't a big thing. But just the safety and, you know, a couple of speed jump bumps, whatever, but, you know, now that you guys put the cones up in the street, that's gonna slow everybody down a lot, but. Um, like I said, I feel sorry for the rest of you guys. I, I really do and, and I, I know that you guys are trying to do your best, you know, and, and whether. So whether it costs a lot of you, I understand that. But, so, at that, I'll be done.
I think Jenna would like to respond to your question about cones.
Just to address the cones in the middle of the street and the manhole adjustments. We do bring up the sanitary manholes every winter in case there's a problem because we need to access them. So they do have to cut down to the manhole, bring the castings up. They'll patch it back, um, when asphalt gets here. For Luella, you will get your final lift done this year since we did not dig any utilities in the roadway. So you will get your final lifts there. Um, it'll happen after Twelfth Avenue gets taken care of.
So how late can they put blacktop down? I mean, I don't wanna have, I don't wanna have a final lift put on and then have it peel out because of the throws and the ground is too cold. I mean, I, I don't got, blacktop has to be hot and you put down, and you put it in hot, blacktop and cold ground, it's not gonna stick.
So, um, it will all depend on the temperatures. They're looking to do it on Monday. Um, but as we know, days do change, but so we're looking at next week. But for that lift, we put down, um, it's an asphalt solution that is used as glue to bind layers. And that happens on every street.
So if you say that you're putting the lift on mine, why don't I get a years worth of wear and make sure that it's done the first time? Otherwise, then I'm not gonna have, you know, if it boggles now.
So this, this contractor did not do any utility digging. You know, we didn't replace the water or the sanitary. We didn't do services because they were all new. So there's, there's no settlement from this contractor that we need to be aware of.
But they also put in, and, and the guy walked past my house and I couldn't see the top of his head. And he was over six feet tall. They did put a lot of fill in there.
We, we put a lot of fill in.
A lot of it.
In order to get you a stable roadway. Because obviously, from what you saw, you did not have a stable base under that road.
That's true.
You, so we went extra depth in your roadway to build you a stable road. So every, all the fill that was put in was sand. And compacted sand and an aggregate base. Um, so the dirt, the bad dirt was taken out and we put in a stable base underneath the roadway.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And the cones you guys are talking about there, they're held up because that's the blacktop around them now. So those are staying that way until they get the blacktop. So the blacktop, it's not the contractor that's doing the work, it's the blacktopping company that's holding that part up, that we're having to work around those cones now.
So on ours, they, they, we got the first layer of blacktop, I've dropped that. But with the manholes, there's no, they got cones around, but because there's no, are they gonna fill that in now?
Yes, and that's why they're staying that way until they can do it.
Until the blacktop.
So they'll just put, then the second layer, they'll have to raise it up again then the manholes?
Yeah, they'll raise it up. Yep, and we'll actually put it, they'll put a metal insert in on the manhole and tackle it down.
Right, uh, yeah.
And then put the lift up so that it matches that.
And then put another light last layer up.
Yep.
Cause I just, I didn't know if they were gonna do that. I can't imagine leaving that open all winter.
No, they, it won't be left open all winter.
And are they, are the contractors all done on Twelfth Avenue? I mean, except for the blacktopping?
No, there is still, obviously, a lot of cleanup work to do, but from the contractor and.
Because, uh, across the street from us, there's, there's been a piece of, there've been three pieces of equipment for the skid loader, the sweeper and a forklift, forks and some other thing. They've been sitting there for a month and not even moved.
I'll give them a call and, and get those, and say they're going to go in the space up there. At least get them on the call.
Their gas, their gas trailers been sitting there for three weeks and hasn't been moved. You know, so, they, they, no, then they're right down that, right at the end by thirty, they got a grader, they got a loader, they got a packer all just sitting there.
Then you got cones and then you got a guy who fights right across from the cones, so you can't get around the cones.
So when you're, you're going south on twelve, you gotta go in the northbound lane and get around them.
And some of that stuff, guys, just call and ask, okay? Like, bring it to, if nobody complains, I don't think it's necessarily, if people just call and ask, I'll call Gary and say, hey, we need to move that stuff, at least get it on the side street. Or something like that and do our best we can.
Yeah, okay.
So don't, don't sit and stew and let it bug you.
Oh, no, I just, I, I, so, I just wondered if they were done with the road construction part, why did they say?
But I think some of the dirt work they planned on cut there, they, they thought the blacktoppers weren't gonna be here, so they were not gonna be in there doing that because the blacktoppers are gonna be here and then the blacktoppers didn't show up.
Right.
So I know, the general contractor that did this has actually been, I know you guys are frustrated, but there's a whole lot more of this whole process than the average person would see. They've been very responsive and stuff. We've asked, they've been held up by some subcontractors too. So it isn't just a beat up on them and they did a terrible job. There's other aspects that the average person doesn't see.
Sometimes there's a reason behind that though, too.
And there, there are some days, you're right, the three people working and I even question.
No, I mean, there's a reason behind why they're not getting fast action out of their subcontractors too. Sometimes there's more to the story than.
Are the workers and the contractors, I mean, just fine? I mean, they, they, they helped us get in our road. They weren't the problem on, so, the, I'm sorry, the workers, they weren't getting in our areas. Didn't you get your stuff? They did the dirt. I thought they did, they did really good. They were really nice.
But as far as, if you guys just call City Hall or me, I will work with them and every, any complaint I got on stuff, I think I addressed and tried through some of the stuff you guys are talking about. I never even heard about. And I think I know a couple we were talking about that moved out. Uh, in all fairness, they were older and they were going to move in the near future. I know, I know who you're talking about, who's me.
They weren't gonna move that fast.
But they weren't gonna move that fast.
They rented because of that.
Nope, nope, I don't. And I know, I haven't talked to him, but he never even, uh, really, when he talked to me, he was always very nice.
He is. That's, he's just a sweet guy. She's never said.
But if we don't get the complaints for us to go up and deal with them, if we complained and stuff didn't get dealt with, at least on my end, please let me know because I think I tried to address any complaints that I received and dealt with.
And what is what, like, now we know their, their cement curb has got a lip out above the blacktop. Now what's gonna happen this winter with the soap plowing? Are they gonna chew that curb up?
I'm not gonna lie, there's times they get dinged up a little bit, but this is something we've done for, you know, this isn't our first year of running these projects. And this is very common. We get stuff like this every year, a little bit too, maybe not quite to this extent. Uh, and we have to roll with the punches and do the best we can. There are some things we have to learn from which we did doing this and we learn every single year and times change and things change and we have to roll with the punches.
Give an approximate when they're coming in the spring to leave a pile? I forgot to ask that.
Um.
Probably June, June, July.
Like, late in June.
Oh, so it's summer.
It'll be summer. Yeah, so the asphalt plant usually doesn't open up until mid-May or whatever it is.
Do you know, are they gonna kind of do everything all at once or is it gonna be sectioned again?
I'm not sure.
Okay, that's a fair answer.
Can we get a notification as to when that song is going to, like, uh?
Can we get a notification as to when that song is going to like an email or a letter? So we can actually have that thirty day.
And that can be up to us to decide a little bit, general engineer, that, okay, this is the date you guys are gonna be start, be responsible for watering. And for thirty days from this point, and then we'll send a notification out when that ends and that's what we did with the other parts. And in fairness on the side, you guys, they had a siding company contracted for this project and they never showed up. And they couldn't get up. And this company who had no plans or doesn't do siding, ended up having to do the extra work on their own. Because, and this is a very common thing this year, it, it happened in Chapel, it happened in a couple of other places that Central Landscaping just didn't show up. Said he was overbooked and couldn't do it. And these guys did the best they could to make do with what they had. And they had to pull their guys off of the street project to go do the siding because the siding company didn't show up. So there's a little bit more to some of this than you guys all see and understand on a regular basis. And I know it's frustrating. I'm not making excuses, but I don't wanna just open season on that necessarily.
Rochester landscaping is south, I'm not.
They were the contractor to.
Not Edge though. You say that they pulled his guys to go do it.
Well, but they took care of the watering and then they did do some of the siding.
And actually, Edge had to do all the, that finished grading, that finished tolerancing. Usually, the siding company does that. And Edge had to go and do that instead of relying on their subcontractor.
Good question. What happened to the sidewalk down at the end by the church by Terry's house? The last section they poured in is just.
It has to meet the drain both directions because it would be a low stock center. So it had to be humped up to meet drainage and it's got to drain each direction. Hopefully, it doesn't look quite so much once we put it around it. But I, it does look, when you look at it now.
I guess one other comment I would have is, some of us on Fifth Avenue, nothing was ever mentioned that there was gonna be work. I mean, down at the end, one of the people saw, still was worth fifteen feet into the yard. My house, it was worth six feet into my yard, into my property and that was never mentioned. You know, basically, it was too late to do anything about it. I mean, I had no choice but to have my yard all tapered down. And I mean, that had to have been in the plans. We knew the road was gonna be lowered. It would've been nice to just know that, you know.
Well, some of the work back into yards is due to where your curb stock is. On Fifth, you're.
Oh, well, and you had to taper yards because the road was lowered and.
Well, on Fifth, we actually weren't even planning on redoing the whole sidewalk that came back and redid the whole sidewalk at request of the property owners. Um, which, yeah, some grading changes then did happen, making the sidewalk now meet eighty eight standards.
I just have a quick question. You said thirty days. We have half of the lawn sited, so that's already eight days past it.
Some of the stuff with the side, we've had temperatures down to twenty-two degrees there each year. Side is pretty much normal.
I know, but we only have half the yard done and they haven't done the other half, so.
We'll go off of when the last part of your yard is.
Say that again?
We will go off of when they actually have your whole street completed. Yep.
I just have a quick question for some of you guys that complain that, that stated that lack of communication or coming in the driveway for three weeks or four weeks or five weeks, eight weeks, six weeks?
Three months, three months, four months.
More like three months total.
Did, was that, did you guys like email the city or did you guys ask questions or did you get contacts in hall or?
I guess no, I mean, I didn't. I didn't wanna be the guy that calls every other day. I mean, our street is barricaded on both ends with piles of dirt. I don't know how, we couldn't know that that was going on.
There was no way they could've done it. I mean, cause it was so deep to begin with that. I don't know how they, even, and even when they did give us an approach, it was not an approach. We had to go and dig the rest of the sand gravel up to make sure we could get in. So there's no way that we could've gotten in or even asked anybody because they, they were just at that part. It was so deep down there that, and muddy and.
The rest of the timing wise did have a lot to do with it and I, not, it's frustrating.
And, and we all know that. It was just, it was just a frustrating summer. It was extremely frustrating summer.
And we could've got it done quicker. We dug down deeper and taken out more of the clay soils and stuff like that, but then it's driving the cost up and having to play, put the material back in to replace that. You gotta weigh that all out because it worked doing that. And we could've got it done a little bit quicker, but it was gonna drive everyone's prices up also.
And, and I guess another frustration for, uh, I was outside a lot. So I'd see these guys sitting in there, whatever they were, they're on their phones for thirty, forty-five minutes. And then like, could you be doing something? I mean, they were just sitting there doing nothing. That's the frustrating part when you know they could be working and are doing something else because nobody was. And I did talk to the, I talked to them pretty much every day, the guys. And one guy told me that if the supervisor, isn't Jerry?
Jerry.
Isn't there, nothing happens. That should not be happening. You know, so when, when you have a worker telling you that, that's kinda sad.
You should've called us right away.
No, and we didn't know that. Oh, you heard that one. Cause I even talked to Jerry about it. So.
I mean, the frustrating thing to me, all things aside, is, is we get told one thing and then something completely different happens. I mean, we're told that we're gonna have access to our driveways and there's zero attack. At that meeting this spring, we were told Jerry or Steve would be on the project every day. That was not the case. There would be nobody there if you wanted to ask a question. There was nobody there. Jerry might be there for ten minutes in the morning and he was gone all day because they had a project going on in Rochester. Don't tell us Jerry or Steve's gonna be on the project at all times. If they have no intention to do that, I mean, they basically just blatantly lie to us, you know?
And again, we learned our lesson. We're not gonna throw as much information out there this year because it changed too much that we don't have control over.
That wasn't you guys, that was them.
No, but we even, our emails that we sent out, we tried to do it to inform people to help out. And it almost hindered it more than it helped and it was out of our control.
But it was really nice to know that they were coming so you knew, kind, you know, an estimated time, but, you know, so less communication. I don't know if that's good either for people.
Well, but just keep the communication, to keep it more general as far as this is what's coming up and not giving a specific timeframe. Cause then when they don't show up, everyone's mad and coming back and it just, that got hard on our end also. We were trying our best to keep everybody what we thought would help.
Well, and uh, you know, they came, was it in April, ground our road up, you know? And we had all that dust and we called somebody down at City Hall and they said, well, they're supposed to come every other day and water it or every week and, and, and oil it. They watered it once before they, that whole summer before they even started work. Just one time they watered our street. Never oiled it.
Yeah, they wouldn't oil it.
You know, so I mean, there we, sad, couldn't open our windows in our house, couldn't do anything outside because there's so much traffic up and down the street. And we, our butch across the street, he had, he made signs, tried to get some soul people down, but like, that's, that's a problem. Nobody slows down when they come up our road.
Let's talk sewer and water here just a second on Fifth. Um, did, um, why did we have to deal with the sewer and water? Why did we have to do that? How old was the, the current sewer and water?
The existing sewer and water, I believe, was from about forties or fifties.
Yeah.
Um, your water was a four inch main, which is not a three inch main for fire protection.
For what?
For fire protection. We need at least a six inch main to provide fire protection. So a four inch main does not provide you adequate water supply if your house is on fire. Um, out of the hydrants. Um, so we upgraded water for, for that reason. We upgraded sewer because of the condition of it. Um, we also evaluated that. So I guess, does that answer your question?
Was there a reason why all the fire hydrants were moved around? Cause now one neighbor's got one in the middle of their yard and what wasn't there before. Was there a reason, reasoning why that all the fire hydrants got moved?
So we based the fire hydrant placements partially based off the phasing of the project so that we have the proper testing locations. But it's also to meet, um, our standard to have at least one hydrant every four hundred feet so that we provide adequate fire protection to every house. Sometimes when we get out there, the existing fire hydrants, they're too far apart. So we need to get them closer together, um, and balance the placements of them. Because your standard, uh, fire hose, when running off of your truck, uh, you can get about two hundred feet and maintain your proper pressures through that line, the piping. So that's how we're trying to, we try to place your hydrants.
I guess I was surprised that they moved. Was that mentioned in the plan ahead of time that the fire hydrants were gonna be moved? I was just curious.
They would've been shown on the plans, yeah, their placements. Same with moving light poles. That was shown on the plans ahead of time.
Well, I'll ask you folks again, is there anybody else that has a written oral objection?
I was gonna ask, yeah. When is my siding put in? And that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm twelve inches high at my sidewalk, my yard to sidewalk. When is that gonna be graded and like finished? And my landscaping finished?
I'm not sure exactly what day they're going to come.
Is it gonna be this year?
Yes. Your landscaper, you're on the corner of, yes. Um, I'll have to talk to Jerry about when is I should fix that and pour that for you. Time wise, we're at, that might be in the spring, but we can figure that out.
But immediately have sod?
Yes, they will have sod.
We have to do sod.
We, yeah.
For a permitting for the stormwater runoff and stuff like that, we have to have sod.
We can't wait. That is, we have to cover all of the bare ground. Um, that is mandated by the M D C A.
Last question. Are we gonna hire Edge again?
We will.
Serious, serious question.
Serious answer is we're gonna wait and see. They got a two year warranty on this stuff. Some of these concerns you've had about curbs and cracks and stuff will be addressed over this two year period. We'll also see how the street turns out in that two year period. Now, I don't know nothing about Edge. I don't study these guys on the internet. I've got other things to do every day.
Now, this is true, Bill, this is.
But what I'm gonna say is, you could've put printer and crew you wanted in here this year. They had some poor conditions to work in. Now, I'm gonna tell you that as a farmer, I'm not happy with the weather all year either. There's other people near them that have been involved in building projects. They know they don't always go smoothly as intended. There's other large projects going up in this town that haven't gone the way they're supposed to.
You put the right crew on the job and it gets done.
You know what?
I'm not, I'm not on those projects too.
I've dealt with eleven different crews in the eleven, ten years I've done this. There's been several really good ones, according to the public, that had some real problems because they ran into the same stuff, weather and everything else. We didn't ban them from town either. I don't know these people. I don't know if you know them personally or not.
I do not. I just know like there's.
I've heard things about other people that I don't believe either. I've had a lot of things said about me in the last ten years. I hope you don't all believe either. You watch and go ahead. But I'm not gonna condemn these guys for two years. Will they bid again? They may never wanna bid a project in this town again if it's that big a pain. But what I'm saying is, give them a break until it's over with. There is a lot of other things that have happened that we have no control over, they had no control over.
They could've worked Saturday. They could've had a bigger crew. Easy. That's, that's, that's no brainer.
There's a lot of things, you know what? We could've not done Fifth Avenue. We thought in all of our brains up here that we were doing the guys on Fifth a favor because we had a whole side of that. Now, listen, we had a whole side of that street come to us with sewer problems.
That's how we did it.
Part of the reason we jumped that project ahead was to help people out. We're sorry. I'm terribly sorry. I pulled in there a few times and visited some of the people. I told them during the project, I'm sorry for what happened here. Maybe we should drop street projects. Maybe that's what we need to watch.
That's not what anybody said.
Well, the way it sounds tonight, it was the biggest disaster that ever happened in Spurfield.
Did you hear that? He said there's three people on that job at times.
Well, I talked to a couple of workers and they said their, their biggest problem was, was the weather. But they're stretched so thin that they, they had too many projects. They didn't have enough employees to, to do all these projects. That's why they were, he said they were, we're stretched so thin, we can't.
Just like you heard the engineer say, Central Landscaping bid this job as a sub and then this plane didn't show up. We're not gonna do it. We can't do it. We got too much to do.
Yeah.
They were trying to hire more people throughout this whole process.
Yeah.
And he was frustrated as anybody talking to him. And I do, Jerry, to me, is a quality guy. I don't know about the other ones, but Jerry's the form and he's been, everything we've asked, he has done. And he's been straightforward and honest about everything too. And he's bent over backwards to help some people with things. And I can't control every single employee, which I'm sure everyone that works out there understands that sort of. But he has made his best effort in my attempt to try and get it. And I, I will, I don't have an issue with these guys. There were days they only had three people in here and we were frustrated and we talked to them about that and said something and it did improve after we said something. But like right now, could they get back to working? Yes, they could be. They could be doing that in September. But they thought blacktop was gonna be here, so they scheduled to go someplace else and it was the blacktop. There's just too big a picture there for people to see that the average person doesn't necessarily see.
I'm just saying, are you on the contractor's side or on the citizen's side?
I'm on the citizen's side.
Thank you.
And like I told you at the beginning of this meeting, mister, I went through exactly worse than what you guys have lived with. If you don't believe me, ask these people what I was like when they were doing my project. I know what you're going through. I feel terrible for what you went through. I don't want to do. What do you want me to do about it now?
I'm just saying, why did they tear up the street in April instead of July?
Because they had big, they had big visions. Well, if it only rained twice this year, it was once forty-five days and once for thirty days. What do you do? What do you do? Every time them guys on Fifth, I felt bad for the crew for a while. Every time they dug it out, got ready to pound it back in, it was raining.
And they lost money. I mean, every time they did it, they had to rework it. That ended up costing them that money also.
And like I said, if I had to do it over again, actually, I'll be real honest with all you sitting here. I wasn't in favor of doing Fifth this year. I probably was one of the ones that said, no, I don't wanna do it. We thought we were helping those people out.
I will say thank you for that. I was one of the people that had problems and came to you guys and I know there was a lot of the behind the scenes work that probably had to happen for Fifth to go. And I'm very appreciative to have the work done. It's just that there was a lot of issues with it. And it probably sounds like all complaints, but I am very appreciative to have the work done. I know either way, we, I mean, we were getting it done next year if it wasn't this year.
No, because we pushed pins off for next year too. So I mean, I'm sorry it turned out the way it did.
I mean, yeah, it, it sounds like we're all complaining, but I know at least I'm, you know, I'm basically full of crap. So I'm glad I don't have to have that anymore.
So what the question is, is what can you guys do better next year to help people out so you don't have this? You know, how can you help?
Well, I'm gonna put as much faith in the good Lord as I can and talk to him as often as I can. To shut the water off is often easier. I'll tell you that right now.
Yeah, but yeah, yeah, I get it, but you know.
You've got to admit, Sally, that was the major mess in this whole thing. A lot of these driveways wouldn't have been in the shape they're in as long as they were if we waited to get constant rain. We could've got stuff done quicker. Things would.
I get that, but I'm just saying as, as, you know, the what next year's weather's gonna be.
Nope, I have no idea.
You know, are you guys gonna rethink of how you're gonna do this so people will?
Yeah, we're not gonna give a date so it's gonna be done by later. Yeah, yeah, realistically, we're gonna go on working days and we'll declare which are working days and which aren't. Cause it, just because of sunshine doesn't necessarily mean it's a working day. And these happen every year and they worked every year and except, but with a lot of the same complaints. There's complaints about the sod every single year, even when it was in my neighborhood. People are complaining about, they, they think that the concrete wasn't poured right. They, they're speculating that it's gonna crumble in that first year. They don't like waiting for the blacktop to come the next year. They go back to the sod again because it didn't get watered enough, because they never watered enough. I don't understand it. But it's the same things. So you're trying to work on that stuff. Uh, but luckily, we don't hear anything about the sewers messed up, the water mains are messed up, the stuff that really, really matters. And so real, realistically, it's been pretty successful. So there are certainly some things that I'm sure that these guys that are watching it more can be on top of, but a lot of it, like I know people that try to sub stuff to try to add on to their, one of you guys said you were trying to add on to your house. I hope that works during, I mean, that's a pain in the ass too. And I never understood how, how it was in the construction industry that people will look you right in the eye and tell you they're coming there next Friday. And they don't even answer their phone, let alone show up. So I can't imagine trying to do the big projects. A lot of that stuff's probably gonna continue. But all, all I would think that we can do is listen to what you guys are saying. We gotta continue to ask good questions on it. I think we've been looking to try to find money within our budget to have our own full-time inspection people, you know, but, but we're not gonna crank your taxes up in order to do that either to please one neighborhood and everybody else. Even, but, but we're not gonna crank your taxes up in order to do that either, to please one neighborhood and everybody else's taxes go up. So, we've been working on that for like two years to figure out a way to do it full-time rather than part-time. So, I guess the long and short of it is, I, I know at least I'm listening to this. I'm not gonna be able to fix, fix a ton of it. I can certainly ask questions, stay on Sean and Jenna, and hopefully, we can get better. But I guarantee you this time next year, we're gonna have people complaining about things again. And, and even if we try to do everything right or do everything right, something new will come up. If you have any suggestions, if you have a great idea or anything that could alleviate most of these issues, by all means, please come forward and, and let, let any of us know. It's hard, man, and there's, I don't, I don't get it. I don't understand the three people working. I don't understand, but I, I've, I heard actually throughout the job that they tried to hire more. I can't believe that people don't wanna get a job like that, but apparently, they don't know. You know, it's just crazy. You put it all together, and you get this. Yeah.
Well, one of the reasons that they were unable to hire more, and this comes from someone that's very close to, to the owner of Edge Construction, he, people don't wanna work for him.
That's not Jack, is it?
Yes.
It is. Okay, see, that's, I was trying to figure if that was the same company.
They walked away from, there were guys that worked on Fifth and Luela, that by the time they got to Twelfth, they were gone. They were done with them. That's why they didn't have a full crew anymore. That's why it took so much longer.
So, clearly, in our research after, well, we're gonna do an after, after-action research thing on all this, of course, and this is a big part of it. Clearly, when we hear things like that, that'll have to come into account when we decide if they ever bid on another project. You know, because that's, if he's simply an asshole and nobody will work for him, it's not gonna work for him to work for us either.
Well, that's why he's no longer Jack Construction. He, he changed to Edge to get rid of the Jack name.
Okay.
Secondly, I just have a suggestion, and this might be just really dumb, but I think that maybe if you ask for volunteer inspectors, there's probably a lot of people in this town, fellas.
I get that too, but I, I'm gonna cut it off ahead of time on this just because we're, there's so many regulations that it's even a problem that we have trying to get our guys out there. And then here's the other thing that I didn't know, and clearly, I've only been on the council for four years. I, I can tell you, I'm still learning a ton all the time. Half the time, the people that we have inspecting don't even have the power to shut it down if they see they're putting in the wrong fill. All they can do is start making a phone call to this person, a phone call to that person, and then you find out about it a day later. So, at least you know about it, but then you gotta go back and get rid of the crappy fill and put in the right fill. It blows my mind. So, I, I totally, God, volunteer would be great, and you're right, I think a ton of people would, would help. We've got a great community, but it's just that...
I'm not thinking just the normal Joe. I was thinking, selling the baby.
No, I, I, we're on the same page. I get that too. I didn't expect that you meant, I didn't expect you meant me, because I wouldn't know anything about it. I, I'm talking about people that have done it for years that are maybe retired and things like that, because we've had people that are willing to offer it, but unfortunately, that's the other terrible thing about government, is, is that it's, doesn't make sense.
Well, I just have to say, it's good to know that you're gonna do some kind of after-action to try to address it, you know, so that people might have a little bit easier time next time.
I think we do.
But that's kinda all I'm asking for. I need to see people going through all this again.
Totally.
If there's, if there's a way to say, you know, we should've, maybe we could've tried this, or we, you know, and that's all I give them.
Yeah, and I think, I think we do that, because, I, I mean, I, I can't state it clear enough how bad I don't wanna sit through something like this again next year, you know? You will to a certain extent. I know some of it, but now I'm sitting here trying to think, what quarter's that football game, man? I gotta have my kid walk over here so I can drive home after the game, you know, so...
Sally, last year, everyone's suggestion was, um, you know, we, a lot of sale on people here, they, they suggest, their main suggestion was communication this year. And I think the city tried to do more communication, but then they gave our all-you people false hope because subcontractors didn't show up for rain. So, I mean, they suggested more communication. The staff did more communication. Did it help? Listen, some of you guys, maybe it did help. Maybe it backfired, so we could find a happy medium too.
One thing I wanna add about the communication part, I heard from a couple people, they didn't want me the ones to make the phone call. Don't ever be afraid to call City Hall if you see something that doesn't seem right.
That's what we don't.
Don't ever be afraid to communicate with City Hall. Please.
One thing I will add for future roads is the garbage issue was kind of a debacle. So, I just, I don't know how, what needs to be fixed or changed, but that was...
That's a good one. What about her?
The garbage thing has passed over here too, because it gets to a point where if they do figure out a collection point, they gotta label your garbage can, and half the time you gotta pour it down. In the past, some contractors have gone and grabbed them and pulled them all the way down for them and brought them back, or they...
That's something that's...
They can't tuck in their cans. Some areas seem to be better than others, so...
No, because we have like three different garbage people go through our cul-de-sac, and so, most people are on Fridays, some are on Tuesdays, some are on Mondays, and some on Tuesdays and Mondays never got picked up.
And that's the exact stuff. We need to call me. I mean, my number's on the thing, and I'll deal with them, because that's the stuff they are...
Another project. I don't know what the...
And if I don't get that call, I don't know or not.
Was it my garbage can, but, you know?
But that's my favorite. Nobody has to just ask us right away. We'll try and address it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Somebody labeled our garbage cans.
They're supposed to come first thing in the morning. They're supposed to go up and get, you guys were supposed to have your garbage cans up by seven in the morning, and they would, at seven o'clock, they would pick them up all the way up, and if they weren't doing that, then, you know, let us know. That's the stuff, and we did communicate that during our meeting. We helped early. If they weren't doing it, let us know, and we'll...
They, they pick their garbage.
It's easier to just do it yourselves.
The people that came home after work, we couldn't find them, okay?
We never knew where they were.
You know, one time they're down one...
I guess all I would ask is just look into the company.
I don't think it's easy to just go back and get them back, and that stuff, we need to solve.
That didn't always happen.